All right, we're back after a short break to change the DVD. Was that last question fully answered?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Other questions in?
Well.
Yes, are we still going?
Oh, yeah, we're still rolling along.
Okay.
The four components will then be collapsed to form the annual summative rating for each What I've done for the board is I've tried to highlight the places where our plan deviates from the state plan, and it's probably worth noting that there are actually three separate things that we're talking about here tonight. One are the actual requirements of the legislation. The state published 48 pages of guidelines that the new evaluation process had to meet. So, the first document that was released were the guidelines, and there were 48 pages of those guidelines that we needed to meet. The next thing that the state released was their model plan. Their model plan was called the SEED document, and the SEED document stirred up a lot of conversation and controversy. The SEED document was the document that said every teacher would have six evaluations in year one, and it was really overwhelming for districts to realize that that's what was being suggested. The SEED document, in my estimation, was very much a summative process. It was a process of measuring, rating, and sorting teachers. So, in a very sort of informal way, what we did is we took the SEED model and our Guilford plan and highlighted some of the biggest areas of divergence. The first, we've already mentioned, the SEED model was built on the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching and the Danielson work in her framework for teaching. Ours is our framework, which becomes the cornerstone of how we will look at and talk about teaching and learning in the classroom, works off of those two models, but begins with the principles of learning, and that is a significant difference, and I believe that Guilford is the only district in the state that is looking at that teaching and learning experience through the principles of learning. The SEED document allowed for, to meet the load of six evaluations a year, allowed for what was identified as complementary evaluators, that you could bring in retired administrators and have them come in and evaluate some of the teachers in your school district, that you could sort of deputize other folks to go out and do some of those evaluations for you. We are working with our primary evaluators only. I don't believe that a principal can abdicate the responsibility for knowing about teaching and learning and being the instructional leader in the building. To bring in a cadre even of really talented retired administrators would create a disconnect that we're not looking to create in this school system. So, at this time, we're working with primary administrator evaluators only. In the SEED model, it was six observations for every teacher in year one, three formal observations and three informal observations. In our local model, we intend to do three observations of veteran staff members in year one and four observations for new teachers, teachers who are still in their first or second year in the Guilford schools. We believe that we can collect valuable evidence and not have to be in every teacher's classroom for six actual observation and data collections. I mentioned this earlier, but the domains of teaching practice in the SEED were weighted. Planning only accounted for 6% of the evaluation. Professional responsibility for 6% of the evaluation. In our document, and you see it in our pie chart, each of the four domains equally represents 10% of what we look for when we talk with a teacher before a lesson, when we go into a classroom to watch a lesson, when we look at a teacher in a PLC meeting or in a PPT meeting, interacting with parents, with other professionals, we're looking for the full range of the instructional experience. In the SEED model, the summative rating for teacher practice was derived by taking mathematical measures for 18 indicators across four domains, over six observations, and at the end of the year tallying all those numbers up, weighting them by the weighted piece that you see above, so that all of your observations in the planning piece were only multiplied by .6, but all of the observations in the instructional component were multiplied by 1.4, and that all of those observations then created a number between 1 and 200 that was then plugged into a grid to tell you which of the four ratings this teacher should have evaluated. We have, and I really applaud our committee for this, we have agreed that our rating for that component will be done holistically. We will look down at the, we will sit down at the end of a school year and say, here are the observations over the course of the school year. If you're a new teacher, there might be four; if you're a more veteran teacher, there might be three; if you were a teacher who was identified as below standard, there will be six, but here were all the observations that we made for you. The tool that I mentioned earlier that we're creating will give a tally of all of the ratings that you received, and in fact, the tally will be timestamped. So, instead of taking them, weighting them, and averaging them, we might be able to look and say, in the beginning of the year, you were receiving a lot of ratings in the below standard of the developing area, but later in the year, after a lot of work, I see that the ratings are shifting into the proficient area. You will make a holistic determination at the end of the year that as I look at the entirety of the observations, I see a preponderance of evidence that says that you are a proficient teacher, and your rating from that practice component will then be proficient. We have held on to, at the back of your document, a mathematical process, should the teacher appeal that rating. If the teacher and evaluator can't agree that I have been developing this year, and that's where my performance fell, then we can go back and take all the collected data and run it through a mathematical process. But, we wanted to take that process out so that the conversation was about, how well did I perform this year, and how am I most likely to perform better next year, rather than, I added it up and I got a 3.6, you're telling me that you've only got a 3.2, let's go back and run the numbers together. That's not going to be a productive conversation. It's not what we've been asking principals to do on videotape this year. So, we wanted to focus it on the conversation, and I believe that that is a move in the right direction. Likewise, the summit of evaluation around the goals in the SEED document, it's simply a matter of saying you had three goals, the average of your three ratings is this, that's the number. We have likewise said that we can take the goals and give a holistic scoring of the goals, or we can say, I had one goal and I was rated a two, I had another goal and I was rated a three, I'm therefore a two and a half, and we can move forward. But, that's a conversation between the evaluator and the teacher. This goes back to something we touched on earlier. We just thought that this was unwieldy. In the SEED document, every teacher can choose between signing on to the whole school goal or creating individual classroom surveys that they send out to teachers or students and basing their goal on those individual surveys. When I said we might, in later years, bring some student voice back in, we agreed that in year one, the idea of some teachers signing on to a whole school goal, but other teachers opting on to create personal, individual surveys, when we haven't done any training on how to write a valid survey, or we haven't talked about a system to maybe preview surveys before they start going out from 300 different teachers in 300 different ways, that for year one of our document, we would all embrace the idea that a whole school goal is probably a positive thing for at least a portion of every individual's assessment to be tied to the success of the whole school as a whole. We thought that that was going to be simpler in year one and a positive thing to do. And so, while the SEED document gives that choice, we thought it was going to be much more manageable in year one simply to adopt a whole school goal, which only represents 5% of the overall evaluation, and student voice would only fill that 5%, so we wanted to hold off on that.
And if I could just add on, I think this board heard the teachers talk about that whole collaborative spirit and that professional learning community and being a part of, you know, we're all in this together, was so important to them, and even the teachers on the committee felt very strongly that, in fact, I heard some comments that we wish the whole school goal counted for more, because we're all working together toward this, and it really matters to us, and it's about that collaborative spirit. And I know you heard that from their conversations that night about professional learning communities and working together and the importance of that, and that's how that whole school goal thing really came about, too.
One of the fears that we were hearing early on when this evaluation was being talked about is that it's actually going to be counterproductive to teacher collaboration, to PLCs. If everybody's being measured by their individual student performance, would I hold on to my lesson plans and not share them like teachers of old may have held on to their lesson plans? The idea of a whole school goal brings people together and supports the idea of a PLC. The rating matrix, if I could direct your attention to page 29 of your document. In the state document, the rating matrix, we felt wasn't clear, and in fact, we felt wasn't challenging enough. The rating matrix talks about the two hemispheres of our pie chart, and those two hemispheres become the two axes of this matrix. So, if you receive a rating of proficient on your teacher performance in practice, and you receive a rating of proficient in your learning outcomes, you look at the matrix and it logically tells you that your overall rating would be proficient. The state matrix, when you looked at it, did not make sense to us. It wasn't balanced, it weighted, even though they, both halves of that were supposed to be 50% of the overall evaluation, if you looked at the matrix, it leaned in favor of learning outcomes as opposed to the observations, despite the fact that the percentages said they were to be balanced. Additionally, according to that matrix, if you were rated as exemplary in teacher performance in practice, but proficient in learning outcomes, you received an exemplary rating overall. Our rating matrix, one, is more rigorous than the one that the state put out. The only way to be exemplary overall is to be exemplary on both axes. Now, there's a lot of opportunity to be proficient, but you have to be exemplary. We also were much less forgiving of a below standard rating on either axes than the state matrix was. And, our matrix is very clear. The state matrix had boxes in it that said, "Collect more evidence," but there was no explanation as to how to do that, and there was no description as to how you do that outside the document, because the document details how you're supposed to collect evidence. But, if you ended up with a rating where you were proficient or exemplary on one axis, but below standard on the other, the rubric or the matrix seemed to indicate, well, that doesn't make sense, go collect more data, but it never explained how. We've said that if you're exemplary on half of it, but you are, or proficient on half, but below standard on the other half, you're below standard. Both of these are important elements of performance, and you have to be effective in both of those areas. So, this is one area where in fact, our process is more rigorous than the state's process. And finally, the SEED model had an enormous emphasis on very complicated numerical scoring, in some cases to the second or third decimal place on what is supposed to be a four-point scale. We have, to large degree, eliminated much of the numeric scoring and said, this should be a professional conversation about teaching and learning between a teacher and an evaluator, and it should be a holistic rating. And again, if I go away and spend a day with a golf pro for the day, I don't want him to be silent all day long and then at the end of the day tell me, you were an 82. That doesn't help me, it's just a number. I want lots of feedback through the course of the year, and at the end of the day, I want a message that said, you were really good today, but if you want to be really, really good, these are the things that you need to work on. And we have tried to create a process that will encourage that sort of conversation between the evaluator and the teacher, and not one that gets bogged down in a 200-point scale calculated to the second decimal place to determine your four-point rating. So, all of that being said, this has been a lot of work. We believe that we have created a very good document, and the real work will only begin once this has been approved at the state level, and the board level. We will bring it back to the board, but we need to begin training the teachers and the administrators on this document. We have two professional development days at the end of this school year, currently scheduled for June 27th and 28th, if we don't get any more snow. Our entire administrative summer work is built around the calibration and training to be prepared for this rollout, and when we return to school next year, we'll be rolling out what essentially will need to be a full year of training, because while we're going to overview the document on the last two days of school, we don't expect anybody to remember what the middle and end of the year are supposed to look like. So, when we come back next year, we will then focus on the rollout portion, we will then do periodic training through early release days and faculty meetings to get ready for the middle of the year portion, and then again, through early release days and faculty meetings, get everybody ready for the end of the year portion, remembering that this will be rolled out with 1/3 of the certified teaching staff next year and 100% of the certified administrative staff. There's a second document for administrator training, and we're adopting the SEED document for two reasons. It's better than the SEED document for teachers was, and if we're going to create a local option, it has to be ready for submission by April 15th, and we've spent all of our time on the teacher document, so the only option we have, and in fact, it would be the default option, should this board choose not to take any action, we would end up adopting the SEED model for the administrative evaluation. I do suspect that there will be modifications to the administrative model as we move into year two.
So, understanding that's pretty labor intensive, were there things that jumped out at you in that document that you would change?
In the administrative component? Yes. The rubric for the administrator evaluation, the rubric for the teacher evaluation is built on four domains and has 18 indicators. Our local document has four domains and 17 indicators. The administrator document, first, doesn't use similar language, so instead of domains, it has six elements, and it has 77 indicators. It needs to be a simpler measure. We cannot be trying to measure our administrators on 77 atomized activities that they engage in every year. It needs to be a measure of their effectiveness holistically, and so, we've already talked with the state about, yes, we'll use the SEED rubric, but we will maybe never talk about 77 discrete indicators, we will only talk about the six large components, and how is each principal performing in each of those six large areas. I also humbly suggested that if we have a document for teachers that administrators are using as a framework, and then another framework that is being applied to administrators, they should have common language. They should both be built on domains, they should both be built on indicators, and it would be a great thing if they were the same four domains and similar indicators, but that has not been adopted at this time by the state. I imagine our revised version will have something that looks more like, more like the teacher model. That's the biggest takeaway so far. I am currently attending five days of training at the state level in the state model, so that I can then come back and train the administrative team in the state model as well, the administrative model as well as the local teacher model. We're far ahead in the teacher model than we are in the administrator model.
And are the administrators as a group okay with, relatively speaking, okay with having a default state model?
I think okay would be an appropriate descriptor.
That's why I used it.
They're smiling at least in the back.
Well, I guess another way to put it would be understanding of the situation.
I think they recognize it as a work in progress, yes, and I think that is maybe, I think it's maybe a little less intimidating to the administrators going into the evaluation process than it was overall for the teacher ranks going into the process. I think it was, I think it was rolled out in a way that became very intimidating for teachers. I think there was a lot of just lack of communication for teachers about what this means. I think that the administrative group is a little better informed about what this means, and I think they're a smaller group, and so I think there's a little less stress around the administrative evaluation than there is around the teacher evaluation. And when I say that we will have 100% administrator involvement next year, 1/3 of our teaching staff will be going through the teacher model, and all of the principals and assistant principals and deans and special ed coordinators will be responsible for evaluating some of the teachers through that teacher model. Every administrator will also be involved in the administrative model with the exception of me. The only person, the only employee in this school district who doesn't have to go through one of these two models is myself. You remain free to evaluate my performance in any way that you see fit, but we will all be participating with this. So, I will be working with all of the principals and all of the central office administrative team going through the new administrative model. Mr. Bowden will be working with all of the assistant principals and deans going through the new administrator model. Mrs. Brown will be working with the special ed coordinators, taking them through the administrator model. Dr. Keen will be working with the people who work within the teacher contract, but through central office, instructional coaches and the math specialists, taking them through the teacher model. So, as a team, we will all be working with these new evaluations, and therefore, we'll all be informed and able to have feedback into how we need to massage each of these moving forward next year. I don't expect either one of them will come forward next year to this board or back to the state and look exactly like it looks tonight. I'm sure we're going to learn something about both of them.
Questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
Well, I have a concern. You know, this whole thing is formidable, bordering on overwhelming, and we know that per student, our administrative structure is not as rich as some other districts. Can, is there enough capacity in our administration to do all this? I mean, it seems overwhelming.
I think it's a very good question. I continue to be in conversations at the state level. Superintendents across the state gave feedback this year that there were two concerns with the plan. The plan itself was overwhelming, and the rollout seemed unreasonable. The state did listen, and they did modify the rollout. Originally, we were expected to roll this out with every teacher and every administrator in the district next year, and they, there has been movement on the implementation. It went from 100% implementation to a 1/3 of the staff implementation. I continue to comment, and in fact, when our legislators were here, they talked about the bill to just delay the whole thing a year. I did write testimony that was shared at the hearings, and my testimony was, delaying the whole thing a year isn't going to address the root concern. In fact, it may just lead to procrastination, that if there's going to be any further adjustment, I wouldn't adjust the rollout anymore. I still would want to consider adjustment to the plan itself, and I do believe that with a window for annual modification, that there may be something that continues to come out. That being said, I think we may have capacity to absorb a 1/3 next year. I believe that we have adjusted the plan locally to a degree that it is manageable. We're working very hard to give the administrators tools to do it, but we'll know better as we come forward in next budget season. Do we come back and ask for the other half of the administrative increase? Do we come back and say, .5 administrator is still going to leave us short? I don't know. We'll have to live in it for a little bit, but I would caution that there may be districts all over the state that are asking for administrative increases in staffing next year as a result of this requirement, and I don't think anybody has really thought ahead what that will, what kind of impact that would have on a state level. I can imagine how that would be received here in Guilford, and I can begin thinking through if that's the way we have to go, how we would, how we would do that, but boy, on a state level, this is not a good time to be looking to increase public school administrative ranks statewide because of a legislative change that people didn't think that this was going to require more hands to do. That's the question that keeps me up at night.
Is the state even going to be able to keep up with track of the districts that are complying with the regulations that they're putting out there?
We intend to make a good faith effort to meet these standards, but I don't see how that there will be rigorous audits, or I don't, I don't see how they would have the staffing to do that. So, you know, we've tried to meet a plan that meets the guidelines that we are proud of, and we will do everything we can to implement it in good faith, but no, I don't see the capacity at the state level to run rigorous audits on what's happening with these plans at the district.
Which is all the more reason why we need to do our own. You know, we've been talking about this for years, and that we need to have a better evaluation model here, and the fact that the state is pushing is fine, but we needed to do this anyway, or something like this anyway, you know, might or might not have looked just like this, but...
Well, you know, I've thought about that question, I've thought about it quite a lot. If, if the phone rang right now in the middle of this meeting and said, hey, we're taking away all that crazy evaluation stuff, do whatever you want, I wouldn't throw this document away. I would absolutely say, give us a couple of weeks, let us come back to you. I'd go back and I would make changes, or I would suggest changes, I would ask that we think about some things with the committee, but there are components in this plan that I happen to be really, really proud of, the framework being one of them. I think going into a class and using a lens to direct your focus and to help have common language is a good thing. So, there are components, if they took away the guidelines tonight, this would be back at your next meeting and you would see, you would see much of it that would look familiar to you. There would be components that would be, that would be changed, there would be maybe be a weight that would be relieved, but it wouldn't disappear completely. There would be a lot of it that would be left that would look very similar.
And I just want to say that Dr. Keen and Dr. Freeman have spent a lot, a lot of time on this plan, putting it together with the committee, but on their own as well, and they've worked very hard to make it reflect Guilford's own thoughts and the way we are teaching here in Guilford. And I think they need to be commended, because a lot of the other towns are going, and at my learn meeting, they're all wanting to say, what's Guilford doing over there? Because I heard a presentation actually by Jerry Blair from Waterford, who's one of the towns that are monitoring or piloting their program, and he came to talk about, he's looked at Guilford's plan, because they needed some, something to compare, and they're all scratching their heads, kind of thinking, how are we going to make this work? But, we have done a good job, I think, here, and even though it doesn't look at, every meeting, we said three and four times, keep it simple, keep it simple. Doesn't look it, but that's what we tried to do, but that's because of the, we're going to have to, and you can see why the teachers at our last meeting were expressing a lot of trepidation, concern over this. Just, as you say, it can be overwhelming, and it's their job that's on the line, and there's a lot of work here.
And was the committee ultimately unanimous in this proposal?
Yes, we worked together collaboratively on this proposal.
Yeah, there was consensus to move this document forward to the Board of Education. We didn't take a formal vote.
No, no, okay, but there was no...
We were a working committee, but there was strong consensus in the group.
No.
I think, I think the group felt good about the work that we had done.
Yes.
Yes, it's worth noting that the, most of the teacher seats were simply, we asked the association to fill, to fill more than half of the teacher's seats. President of the association, Vice President of the Teachers Association worked as hard as everybody else, so there's very much a connection between the association, and it's not just teachers, but formally, the association collaborated in this. And I, and I believe that, that they're getting requests to see our document as well. It's not just superintendent to superintendent, but I think it's, it's union president to union president saying, what are they doing in your district? Because there is concern at the teacher level about how this, how this is working out. And again, particularly what we're, I think I'm most proud of, is a focus on a holistic process and not on just running numbers for the sake of running numbers. The subgroup that Dr. Keen peeled off and worked on with, with writing the goals, the SEED document, the pilot version, we asked Waterford to come, and Craig Powers, the Assistant Superintendent from Waterford, came and spent a big chunk of one day with us. In the state model, the tracking form for every individual goal is five pages long, not, not what you do for your whole evaluation, but for each goal, and you can have up to four goals, it's five pages for each one of those. We worked on getting it down to one piece of paper, front and back. Now, there's going to be an electronic version of that, and really, really thoughtful, reflective teachers who write a lot will be able to fill in those boxes, and it will grow from there, but as a starting point, we went from five pages to one piece of paper, front and back, that you will adopt for each goal. You may write from one to four goals each year. In our first year, we will be strongly recommending that everybody do one goal until we get good at this. There's no reason to force ourselves to write and monitor four goals each. We should start with one, and we should get good at it, and start writing more nuanced goals and using the data in a really smart way, rather than writing lots of goals that is using data fairly simplistically and bluntly. I'd rather have one really nuanced goal than a, than four simplistic goals.
All right. Well, is there a motion then that we submit the teacher and administrator evaluation plans as attached as exhibits to the agenda to the state for their, if you call it, review?
Can we do them separately?
If you wish. You want to do the teacher? Is that your motion?
No motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Questions, comments? On my favor?
I oppose.
Okay.
Thank you.
Administrators, you want to make that motion?
No.
You don't want to make that motion, all right? You want to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second? We just need, we...
Second.
Okay. Kind of have to do it this way, folks, you know?
I would, I would suggest that, discussion time?
Yeah, I understand, that's the way it works. The motion gets made in a second.
I would suggest it's a defaulting to the administrator one anyway, that we, I would not vote favorably just to default to something. If it's going to default, let it default. I think it's, I think you guys have done a great job on what you currently have here. And then I think the expectation is that another document like this will be generated over time, and if it defaults to it, it'll default to it.
If the board, if the board doesn't take action, or if the vote doesn't approve submission of the, it would default to the state document anyway. That is the assumption at the state level.
Is there a downside to not sending forward this document?
Because it's going to, the end result is going to be the same.
Right. The end result would be the same, but it would be a slightly, a more nuanced response from this Board of Education than approving the state document for, for...
Yeah, I agree with that.
End result gets us in the same place.
What would be more nuanced? I'm sorry, I lost the nuance.
I'm not approving a state document.
It's not approving, it's, the board, I guess, wouldn't be accepting the state document, but by not making a decision there, we would end up in the same place anyway.
Well, we're not being asked to approve, we're being asked to select. And you either select the state model or the district-proposed alternative.
It's where the state...
But, but where boards fail to act, it will default to the state model.
But there's, what I'm saying is, we're not approving.
No.
But we're sending a message.
I'm not sure there's much of a message there.
I think the state will know the difference.
I mean, the messages that we didn't have the time to take and do what we wanted to do, and it needs more time, it didn't have. You would like to do your own, but...
And I have voiced over and over again that we were not given enough time to do both of these models well.
Does that make Hillbeam's difference at the state halls of the Board of Education?
Probably not. So I think we've already spent enough time on that particular issue. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, raise your hands then. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay. All opposed? Nay? Okay.
Abstain.
Okay. Motion abstain. Got that? I would, I would...
Send that to the state.
It's all about the inflection.
Oh, my.
I was just trying to make sure the vote got properly recorded here. While we're tabulating the votes, acting like Florida here in 2000. How does a third get selected? The third of the teachers that are going to be evaluated gets selected?
Through a call for volunteers.
Oh, great.
And there was some enthusiasm around the table. In fact, there were a number of teachers around the table who suggested that, you know, really, the only person who wouldn't want to be involved early to find what this is all about would be somebody who may be in their last year or two. And so I was maybe concerned early on, but I do think that we will get a significant response. And then, if we do not fill a third, we're required to make a third, so it would be through lottery.
And is that a third at each school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You know, the state had offered options for rollout where you could select a third of your schools and do all the teachers in those schools. They didn't offer an option where you would do all of your schools, but just a third of your staff. To do this by school, maybe in a district of a different scale, that would make sense. But in our district, to say, two or three of our buildings will participate, and three or four will not, or...
Right, where administrators get the workload.
Didn't make any sense.
But you also need your administrators all trained.
Yes, and there's, there's a whole thing about teamwork and morale and all being in this together, and to train half of our administrators and not the other half, it didn't make any sense. So we pretty quickly agreed that we needed a whole district rollout plan.
All right. We're going to see if we can wrap things up. We're coming up in three hours here. Let's see if we can get out under, less than three hours. The next item, 10, is some recommendations from the policy committee. I think, are you thinking of leaving on this?
Yes, yeah, no, no, I will, I'll do this. Barbara, our wonderful chair of the policy committee was not at the particular meeting where we discussed these, so. So the first, these were all regulations and policies we reviewed at the last meeting. The revision to Regulation 6011, class size. This was, again, one that the committee looked over and came presented to us. This was largely just changes to, to language. We did, in the policy committee, take some time to look at class sizes at, at other schools in Connecticut and the area, and also took time to understand, Dr. Keen presented us just some data on, on class size and the influence of that in a learning environment. So the policy committee felt comfortable with the changes that we made, not to the numbers, but again, just to the language to bring it up to date. So we're bringing this before the board to act on.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 10.2.
Policy 4152, staff development. This was actually changed dramatically because, again, of changes to the way professional development is done, with the evaluation coming, et cetera. So this is something that, and I'm going to ask Dr. Keen to jump in if I'm not sufficiently describing this, but this was something that was really rewritten to much better reflect what happens in all our schools in terms of staff development, but also start to reflect what we're going to be doing with evaluations. Would you like to add? Please do.
The only thing I would add is, there have been some legislative changes, particularly around continuing education units. That used to be required for teachers and are no longer required. So that piece is coming out. So we wanted to make sure that the policy, our old policy or the existing policy was already outdated. We knew that there were some major changes coming. So once the legislative changes were made, we brought those to the committee. And this is really based on the Cabe recommendation that includes all of the new legislation around professional learning. So that's another big piece, the elimination of CEUs.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion that we adopt this?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 10.3.
Okay, 10.3. So the regulation that goes with this, 4152, staff development, this, this regulation included a fair number of forms that are no longer needed for the reason that Dr. Keen just mentioned, that we're doing much more staff development in-house and, and didn't kind of require all these CEU travel forms, all this other kind of stuff that's here.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the revision to the regulation 4152?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 10.4.
Okey dokey.
Regulation 5118.
Attendance and excuses. This is updated policy to clarify unexcused absences and really tightens up the language of this regulation.
Okay. Is there a motion that we adopt this revision of the regulation? It's a regulation policy, I'm sorry. It's a regulation.
Regulation.
So it was a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? What? I'm sorry.
Just curious, in terms of those regulations for absence, do teachers then have the ability to make even more stringent ones associated with it, or is it purely they have to follow policy?
Classroom policy, that would be more restrictive.
This, this is more about the definition of excused and unexcused for the purpose of truancy and how we report to the state. Any school or school district can increase the stringency. I don't think as a teacher independently, I would be making those kinds of decisions unless there's something that I don't know about.
So you're, you're talking about a teacher making classroom policies related to grading procedures based on numbers of attendance, absences that may be different than that. That would be something that we would need to discuss at the individual school level, and those decisions should be consistent school-wide. Okay. Thank you for the question.
Can you find out if that's happening at some point, and maybe report back to us at the next meeting?
Yes.
If you're interested in, I figured? Okay. All right. So there was a motion as second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 5140, item 10.5.
So this, the proposal is to actually just remove it. It is outdated, no longer relevant, and the, the stuff that it represents is handled in other ways.
All right. So is there a motion to remove Regulation 5140 relating to work permits?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally?
And I believe the last policy, 5226, achievement awards, was one that was actually reviewed by a policy committee in 2007, a long time ago. And unfortunately, it never quite made it to a, to a board meeting. So it's, again, another policy that is no longer relevant and not needed. So the proposal from the policy committee is to remove it.
All right. Is there a motion that we remove Policy 5226?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nothing to do with candy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So that's, that takes care of that. Thank you, policy committee. That's terrific to clean up some of those regulations and policies. Item 11, unfinished business, is there any? All right. 12 committee reports, policy committee. I'm going to assume that you have a report. You pretty much reported that. Facilities committee, anything going on?
Yeah, we had our needs assessment. We had our interviews. There's a meeting on the second to review the results, I guess you could say, of those meetings. I am obviously taking a backseat to actually listen to most of these because I know most of the people involved in it, so they've been moving forward on it. And the only reason it's delayed a little bit is because, I guess, somebody wants vacation or something like that. So...
It's okay, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all right.
All right.
I don't care.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Finance committee, you've reported. High school building committee liaison, anything else going on with that?
They're not, they're not meeting every other week.
We're supposed to hear about the... Yeah, we, we heard from the state today. The state will not be able to meet their 30-day window for a state review. We are, we are free to move towards local review, and the local reviewer was placed on hold, was given drawings just in case he wanted to begin familiarizing himself with the project early. So we are well positioned to approve and then move to local review formally tomorrow at the board's meeting, or the building committee's meeting, rather.
How long will that take?
Probably less than the 30-day window. Yeah, it'll be, I couldn't suggest how much shorter, but if the state had promised they wouldn't have made 30 days, this will be somewhat less than the 30 days.
And we have to pay for that?
Yes, there's a fee associated with that. Comes out of the building committee budget and was sort of accounted for early on because there was always an expectation that we would go local. It's always the faster way. So we had planned on that expenditure early on in the process.
So if everything goes well, we'll be going out to bid late spring?
Out to bid in approximately 30 days. We're planning on groundbreaking in early summer, and there are plans for a, a formal groundbreaking at some point in June.